Prior to approving the agenda, are there any additions for the agenda? It does not appear that there's additions, so may I have, we'll move to item number three, approval of the agenda as presented. Councillor Kelleher MP, thank you, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you. You have circulated in your package the minutes of the July 14, 2020 Committee of the Hall meeting. May I have an approval of those minutes? Mayor Ireland, show of hands, all in favor? Thank you, Dana. There's a bit of a delay there, right? That's normal. Thank you. Item number five, business arising from the minutes. I have one that's to do with the S Block paid parking. And it looks like it's going to be open here pretty quick. Is there any progress being made on whatever structure we have for that? Ms. Naddo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think. I think we were coming back to regular meeting next week was the outcome of the last discussion, and that's why you're not seeing this on the agenda today. And Mr. Virchow is leading this file with Mr. Jones, and I do not have further details.
Thank you. Anything else from the, any other business arising? Thank you. Therefore, we'll move to item number six, policy and governance. Item 6.1, public health update and concerns. This is a council discussion, it's verbal. Comments? Councillor Kelleher MP. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the staff for getting out all the notices in regards to masks and respect distancing downtown. I have, I think they're very effective. I'm seeing more and more people wearing masks all the time. And I was just downtown this morning, and I would say 80% of the people downtown had masks on this morning. I was actually quite impressed. So I think it's been very, very effective. And I'd like to thank the staff, I know Christine and Kayla and Nicole put a lot of work into it. And I think when you're going down, cannot they really stand out? And I think it's awesome. Job well done.
Councillor Butler?
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. I feel that the response administration put together accurately reflected what we asked for. I think it was well done. And I agree, we'll never see anything like 100% compliance, I think, no matter what we do. But I think it has made a difference. I do have a question with regard to the leaflets that I think as of last week, we're going to print, and these were to be distributed at the park gates. Has that happened? Or are we still waiting for them to come back from where we're at with that?
Ms. Naddo.
Mr. Chairman, through the councillor Butler, thanks for the question. I was actually going to use this, this agenda item to give you an update on, on where we're at with this communications campaign. And the leaflets are on their way to the gates today. So we did receive them yesterday, which was quicker than, than we anticipated for the turnaround for the printer, from the printer. And the Parks Canada team has been very cooperative. And starting today or tomorrow, they should be inserted in every single visitor guide that gets handed out at the east and west gate. And as councillor Kelleher MP noted, signage on Connaught went up on Friday afternoon. And we're still assessing, assessing different signage. So more of the same signs might, might appear in the next few days on, on different structures that are existing in other facilities that we've managed to get agreement from those owners that we could use them to put our messaging on. And the only item that's outstanding from the council direction that we received a few weeks ago is the Take the Pledge program is the one item that we haven't actioned yet. And we're having some discussions internally on how to, how to make it happen and to meet the council direction, but to not, for it not to become too onerous for staff to distribute. A sticker was, was proposed. So if people could pick up a sticker instead of administration trying to send one to everyone might be a better option. So we're trying to work out those details and see how we can build on our momentum to build even more community consensus around wearing masks and, and have, give people the opportunity to take the pledge as much staff as the general public as launching it, so it reaches as many people as possible is what we're going for. But signage, leaflets, social media and website have been completed. So, so we're 90% there.
Thank you for that, councillor Butler.
Thank you. Is there door front signage for businesses? I think that was one of the pieces. And I confess, I didn't notice any, but probably just not looking.
We did have some posters printed as well as some stickers, which we found in the past were quite useful. And so those have been circulated. Ms. Byrne actually went around yesterday and hit the rest of the businesses that we hadn't got to. So we focused on the downtown core last week and then, but now every hotel and we did the outlying accommodations as well. And so posters and stickers for businesses themselves to, to use and put in their business areas is what we did.
Go ahead.
Thanks. And that's great. What's, have you found pretty good uptake? Our business is fairly universally welcoming to the signage and stickers. What have you found?
Yes, it was well received and we took a team approach for downtown. And so we each took a side of the street kind of thing. And several business owners put them up right away or asked for more. And others, depending who was working and who we spoke to, may have to speak to their manager before it goes up or, or things like that. But overall, yes, the local messaging as opposed to just a provincial poster that you could download on the Government of Alberta website was well received.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Demora?
Well, I'm not sure if it's the campaigning, the local campaign, or it's just the movement, just the movement in the province in general. Although I'm not seeing a lot of, like a huge uptick outdoors, I've been noticing that indoors, there's, people are embracing wearing masks more frequently and not just by 50% of what I see, what I saw a couple of weeks ago. It, it's, it's starting to, to develop into a bigger thing. So on top of all what, what you ladies have to do on a daily basis, I appreciate all the extra work that you and if anybody else helped participate in, in distributing all that information. You know, I can't thank you enough. I think the message is getting out there, how effective it is. You know, it, it's hard to measure, but I believe that it's helping. And you know, I, I really thank you for all the efforts and going forward to help this be embraced by our visiting public.
Ms. Naddo and Ms. Byrne, I have a question for you. In your travels, when you went from business to business, did you happen to notice that if every business had a hands cleansing station at the entrance? Or were there many that don't have? I find far too many that don't have, in my opinion. And because I think that's a key item is that as you enter a premise, clean your hands, anything you touch from there on should be okay. I think that's one of the items that's, that's very key. But I find a lot of our businesses don't have. The Alberta Health website appears to indicate that it's mandatory, but it's, I haven't read it recently, but it's, it's, it's not that well articulated. So therefore people saying, well, I don't really have to. But I think that that's something that, and I know it's not our department. But if you were going by, did you happen to notice whether that's accomplished? Maybe that's unfair because that's not what you were there for. All right. Under public health and concerns, I see we have an item, big item on masks. Ms. Naddo. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, this is an opportunity for council to discuss whatever may arise from a public health standpoint. So I don't want to interject in that conversation, but there is another item I would like to bring up. The communications update was one, and there's something else that I would like to speak to, but it, it can be now, it can be after council has more discussion on this item. So I will leave that up to you, but just giving you the heads up.
Okay. So under public health updates and concerns, under concerns, clearly there's a concern out there for mandatory or, or lack of mandatory requirement for masks. Do we discuss this now or later? There's a, there's a correspondence item later, but. Should we be discussing this now? Not all at once? Councillor Demora, I'm sure you have something to say on that.
Well, I do. And you know, I didn't know where and when. We want to discuss that, even though it's, it's brought up in as correspondence. Yeah, it's, it's a difficult issue to now. And I feel that, you know, we've seen some, some movement in Banff, our neighbors to the south. I think they felt pressured locally because there, they did have a small outbreak there. I didn't get any information on whether that was community spread or just from visitors and different interactions. But yeah, I, I've been told it's by some people that it's late in the day already. As far as the summer goes, we have four Saturdays left where we're going to see some major traffic in our community. And if we were going to make any movement on that, should have been done. But you know, any movement could be progress. I don't want to keep forcing the agenda. I'd like to hear what the rest of, how the rest of council feels. And it's worthwhile discussing.
Councillor Kelleher MP.
I think we've embarked on the education campaign and I have noticed a huge difference. I was just downtown this morning. I know there's not a lot of people down there, but 80% of them had masks. I was quite surprised, but they did. A lot of visitors had masks on. I saw one group and five out of six had masks on. People were lining up to go into Tim Hortons that had masks on. I think with the leaflets going out to the gates today, I think we're going in the right direction. And I think I'd like to see people voluntary do it rather than mandate it. I don't know how we're going to demand that everybody wear a mask, how we're going to oversee that. I don't think we have the resources. And I really like the education that we're doing. And so far it's working. I think I've seen a big uptake and I see a lot of our own residents doing it. And I'll be honest, if you go into a grocery store right now and forget your mask, you're embarrassed when everybody else has them on. I, I think it's going well. And I just want to talk about the hand sanitizer. I've been out in lots of stores and lots of people have it. I was in Edmonton last week and very few stores had it. But when I go into a store here, and I have to say the clerks and everybody working there are awesome, they always remind people, can you please cleanse your hands? I think it's really well done here in Jasper.
Thanks for that. Any other? Councillor Butler? Oh, sorry. Councillor McGrath via Zoom.
All right, you should be able to hear me now. Can you hear me in council chambers? Great. And so I agree with the subject of mandating masks and, and being masked. And, but I still, I grapple with it. I understand and that a large percentage of our population in Jasper are calling upon us to mandate masks. And they've watched Banff now take the steps to mandate masks. And they understand that we as the community that we are, are subject to an increased vulnerability of, of spread of COVID-19, perhaps because of our visitation from everywhere else. But I too agree with councillor Keller-Hampe and how will we enforce this? And what, what resources do we actually have to see this through and the way in which we would want to move forward? We've just embarked on this really excellent campaign of suggesting that masks are strongly recommended and, and it is going well. And I'm, I'm, I don't want to be hesitant and too hesitant that the summer passes us by, we haven't done all we can do to keep our community safe. But I also feel that public health from the very start of this global pandemic, we were told that we follow the lead of the HHS. And I, I know I'm, I know I'm incorrect in expecting the local authorities of health to take the lead on this, that this is an Alberta health issue. And we should be having directive from the proper authorities. And it's unfortunate that small municipalities such as us without the resources are faced with this, as we have been in many other circumstances. But I want this conversation on the table. I don't want to be someone who puts it off and off. And, and we see this at the end of August with an increase of, of our residents receiving an illness because of our hesitancy. But I, I do believe that we need to move. I'm just not sure what direction we need to move in. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I want to say that I, I fully support the increased use of, of masks in the community. I too struggle with the means to that end. I am, I am concerned as, as others have expressed with some of the nuances. But I'm also very encouraged, say from councillor Kelleher MP's suggestion today that the, the campaign of education and awareness is showing positive results. And that is great. I, I worry about our inability to enforce a mandatory mask bylaw. If we follow, for example, the Calgary bylaw, they have left it entirely to bylaw officers and police officers to enforce mandated masks in indoor spaces, which are accessible to the public. But most people would think that that is a private business, but it is a public space by definition, because the public are invited in there. But only bylaw officers and, and police can enforce. I think if we were to follow any approach, that would be the approach to follow. I cannot see a desirable outcome from expecting businesses to become our enforcement arm. But neither can I see the prospect of our bylaw officers going into private business, trying to enforce something. Our bylaw officers are already stretched thin and they are already subject to abuse for doing their job on the sidewalk, simply for, for chalking tires. There is no prospect that they are going to go into businesses for the purpose of enforcing a mandatory mask bylaw. I, that just does not seem to me to be reasonable. There's also a side issue that's jurisdictional and it's not the issue with the province. I appreciate that although the province has jurisdiction over public health, there is in the municipal government act room for a municipality to act, and we've seen others act. But in our unique circumstances and different than Banff, we have no control over land use. And I wonder whether this is a land use issue. And if, if our bylaw was to be challenged locally, I think we would disadvantage the community entirely. So there is a risk there. Finally, I think that's we should return to two of the key messages that we commenced this entire COVID-19 response with. And that is, we are all in this together. Be kind and respectful to each other. I think this is a perfect opportunity for members of the commercial sector to step up and show that they are engaged in keeping our community safe. They can easily say that masks are mandated within their premises and many are doing that, some are not. On the other side, people can choose whether or not to enter a business. Now, there are some exceptions. You, you have to get some groceries, you may have to go to the pharmacy. But for the most part, although people get a chance to vote for council every four years, they vote with their wallet every single day. I think there is nothing but upside for businesses to recognize that by protecting their clientele, they will increase their business. I think that we need allies, not opponents. We need willing volunteers, not reluctant conscripts. I think we continue to push out the message as we are, that we are all in this together. We all have a responsibility to safeguard this community and encourage businesses to engage in that, that mask wearing initiative. I go back to the, to the pledge, Ms. Naddon raised it earlier. I raised it several weeks ago as part of a communication message. I would like to see that continue. A pledge to be taken by residents, local businesses and visitors to keep our community safe. The very signage that we talked about earlier can be put on windows of businesses or their entranceway, showing that they have pledged to keep this community safe. I think we will go further than we will by trying to, pretending that we are going to enforce a bylaw that we know will not be enforced. So I'm, I'm encouraged by where we're going. However, I will add this caveat, although I, I think where possible, we should lead by example, not by edict. I would support directing staff now to start creating a bylaw that we can review and have ready rather than delay. But related more particularly to outdoor spaces, because although indoor spaces may be an opportunity to spread the virus, I am really concerned about our public spaces. And they are within our domain as council. They're not within the domain of business. We did not follow Banff in, for example, closing streets. We took other options that we thought were appropriate. But I think that our sidewalks are not built to accommodate social distancing. And if we are going to attack this as a council, the example that we can set for business is to mind our own store, which is the outside. And I think we should have a look at a bylaw, if it's, if we're going to have one at all, that mandates masks in outdoor spaces, which are under our control. I think there is every bit as much reason to be concerned about spread from outdoor spaces, even though the virus behaves differently outdoor. As our sidewalks become more and more crowded and as the bottlenecks intensify and people eat ice cream by the post office and you can't get there, and yet our residents have to move around on those sidewalks. They don't have to go into any private business, but they do have to use the public spaces. I think that's where our obligation lies. And I would like to start at least, not saying that we will pass that bylaw, because if the, if the campaign of education and awareness goes as it appears to be going, there may not be a need, but neither should there be delay later. So I, that would be, that would be my approach to engage the entire community where we can, but really focus on those areas that are under our jurisdiction. We are similar in this respect to those beach communities, Sylvan Lake that was in the news, and that's not a headline, headline that we want. But Alberta Beach, Wobbaman, all those beach communities have to look at how they are going to address masking in public spaces, outdoor public spaces. I think we should turn our attention there and encourage through the pledge program and I suppose to some extent, just community peer pressure, others to get engaged in keeping our community safe. Because of course, we all recognize that if we're not all engaged, we will all suffer from the negative consequences. But I think we should focus on what is under our control and just encourage businesses to do what's right. And our experience has been that previously they did that. When the province mandated that non-essential businesses shut down and had the list of what was and was not essential or non-essential, many of our essential businesses chose to, to close in any event. So I think there is a willingness in the community to honor the pledge that they haven't yet taken, but it's in their hearts. And I, I think that that would be the way to proceed for now. But in case things don't work, the fallback, and even if we pass a bylaw, the fallback is if it doesn't work is awareness and, and communication, education. So I, I think we should lean that direction and start some preliminary work now. Sorry, I've gone on a little long because I didn't prepare my script. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may have been a bit lengthy, but it was quite informative. And I, I've won the supports of proactive information, change of culture rather than enforcement. So it falls right in line with what you're, what you're indicating. I spoke to a health professional yesterday. He says if we had 100% compliance in hand washing, hand sanitizing, wearing a mask, he thinks it'd be nipped in the bud right away. So I think it is a step in the right direction. Thank you for that. Any more comments? Councillor Butler?
Thank you. And thanks, everyone, for the thoughtful comments. I'm not against a bylaw, and I agree with Mayor Ireland's suggestion that we could begin preparation of a bylaw. But I am not anxious to invoke one now, given that we've seen, I think, really positive success in response to our communication campaign. And we haven't even yet seen the rollout of the leaflets, which is a very critical component of it. So I'm really impressed with what we've seen so far. Like Mayor Ireland, my concern with, with bringing a bylaw in is, I'm not, a bylaw in the end could end up being more of a gesture, more aspirational than anything else, because I see little prospect for meaningful enforcement. And I'm not sure that what we honestly, what want to see in our community would be what meaningful enforcement could really only look like, which would, if we're talking about an enforceable bylaw for any sort of outdoor use, I'm a little concerned about what we think that might look like. You can only picture in your mind some sort of active patrolling of our sidewalks and people being a In your mind, some sort of active patrolling of our sidewalks and people being accosted and reminded by. You know, uniform bylaw officers, I don't know how else. We would think enforcement would work and I'm not sure. That that's something we would prefer in our community relative to or over. Just a really strong encouragement to people to conform to what really is a new social norm and that's really what we're talking about. Wearing masks is fast becoming a social social norm, it is part of what being kind and being respectful means. And we all know that it is very difficult to effectively legislate social norms, it's it's really hard. We could pass a bylaw that says be kind and respectful to one another, but. What would we really be accomplishing and I'm a little concerned about community expectation should we go ahead with the bylaw? Because I think if if that engendered an expectation in the community that. Now that we have a bylaw that we're going to see, you know, every single person on public streets wearing a mask, that is. An expectation that I'm not sure. We could meet, so very impressed with. The way the social norm has shifted and is shifting as we go, I'd like to wait. Another week or two and see. The full fruition of our campaign, including the leaflets. Because the success we've seen so far, I think is really positive. Most of the concerns that I have heard and seen expressed on social media and elsewhere. Have honestly been concerns about what people are observing outdoors on public streets and. Again, I struggle with our ability to. Use a bylaw that a bylaw would be an effective tool. To change those behaviors as opposed to the campaign that we're we're doing now. I think that compliance and indoor spaces has been very strong. And I'm also mindful that while masking is one of them. Measures that is undoubtedly found to be effective to stem the spread of COVID. Handwashing is widely recognized and hand sanitizing sanitizing. By the medical community as being at least as effective as masking. And we have no meaningful prospect of mandating and legislating that. So again, I come back to I'm not against a bylaw. But I am in favor of effective bylaws and I struggle with whether a bylaw would be effective. But all that being said, preparing now for that possible eventuality. Is something that we could do because if we come back to it in two weeks and say, well. Yeah, I think we really think we better move forward with a bylaw. It will inevitably take us some time to prepare and pass one, so if some work could be done now in that direction. It would not go amiss. So thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Council Butler, Council de Mora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all that's been said and I'm glad that a lot of it was, a lot of what I'm feeling is being articulated. By other counselors, so I don't have much more to add. Other than that, I believe it's important to at least have our information and our ducks in a row, so to speak, if we need to. Move forward on a bylaw or making some sort of. Masking mandatory somewhere and instead of waiting to start from scratch. If we decide to go in that direction, it'd be nice to to know what our jurisdictional. Abilities are and whether it's indoor or outdoor and I'd like to have something in place. I don't want to put any more. On the plates of our admin staff, they're already overloaded, but at at the same time and. And even even if it becomes a futile effort and the fact that we don't have to pull the trigger on it, so to speak. That would be nice to have in case we need to make a quicker adjustment to our local policies. Thank you.
Council McGrath.
Thank you, it appears that I don't have the ability to unmute myself, so. Administration is unmuting me, I believe, when it's my turn to speak. The only piece of information that I feel would fit into this conversation that we have not yet discussed would be our. Own municipally owned facilities and. If we were to mandate masking in our own municipal facilities, which I believe is a is a great initiative and. Does demonstrate leading by example and does control what we can control. Would that be included in this draft bylaw, would this be a policy or would this just be a practice for our safe work? Workplaces that we we just abide by, does that need any? Formalcy to it or is something that we can do?
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you for that, Council McGrath and I I agree that is an example that we should set. I don't think we need a bylaw to do that, those are municipal facilities, we can set the rules. And council doesn't even need to do that, administration can do that and I think it would be an appropriate. Response and again, as Council McGrath said, it's an example that we set for the community. The the seriousness to which we we approach this, while I'm speaking, I just. I wanted to thank Counselor Butler for his comments and particularly. His wise choice of words and I I had thought of those words and then they never came to mind when I I spoke, but. This is an issue of changing social norms and because they are social norms, they are much broader than council, we need. Total community support for this, but again, we have really positive experience. Years ago, when we had the so-called Patricia Street problem. It wasn't just laws that were being or bylaws, it was it was actual criminal laws that were being broken. There was all the incentive not to engage in the behavior that was being engaged in and yet people did it. And the route to the end that we all desired. Was through a social norms campaign and it worked extremely well, so. We know that not only can we do it, but that the community can respond as we would hope and expect. So it is a social norm and if we were to have a bylaw. And. It did not have the outcomes that we hoped. The only other option available to us would be a social norms campaign, so I fully support. Hitting it hard right now and continuously because we will come back to it in any event and we need. Broad spread broad spread social. Compliance. And that will happen with the normalization of face coverings, so I thank. Counselor Butler for his absolutely correct choice of words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council de Mora.
Well, and I'm glad you said that because that reminded me of the story of a conversation that took place yesterday and. Someone had approached me, a local business owner and asked me what my take was on, you know, wearing masks and. Just kind of leaned on me for some advice on what they should do with their business. And because they're they're moving towards just mandating masks. While you're not sitting at your table in their particular establishment, which you know, I think is a good move. And I said, well, you know, prior to the town of Jasper. Having a smoking bylaw for indoor facilities in places like that. This establishment that I was working at. The staff and the ownership decided to to get behind just cutting out smoking and there was a lot of pushback in the community. That frequented this place, it was a popular pub and I think everyone knows what I'm talking about. So in particular, the people that frequented there. But we decided to go ahead anyway because we thought it was the right thing to do and lo and behold. I think it was the the first Friday that we're, it was a local happy hour, we were bombarded with a lineup for people that. Wanted to support non-smoking to get into the establishment and I thought that was great. So my advice was, don't be scared, try it out, see if it works and I think you'll be amazed, so.
So thank you for that, I gather from the summation of the conversation is that we should be. Asking administration or directing administration to. Move in this direction, is this is this too soon for that or? Is this clear enough for the administration to Ms. Nadon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, before we wrap this up, that's just ensuring that we have council direction as a whole, so. Mayor Ireland and Counselor Butler indicated that they would be supportive of. Directing administration to start drafting a bylaw, I'm just ensuring that before we. Take that back to our offices that there's alignment from council as a whole. If that's the direction council wishes us to go. I see some nods, I'll leave that to Councilor Jono.
Council Butler.
Thanks and if we're going to talk about repairing a possible bylaw. I think in light of the comments that have been made today around. What an effective bylaw might look like if we find that a. Strong communications plan to move social norms is not as effective as we'd hope. Then I would, I think the only way we could hope to be more effective with a bylaw. Is if that bylaw was very strong and very specific. We all understand that the expectation is to wear masks in public outdoor spaces. Where social distancing is not possible. That is, and the reason it is difficult to enforce is that in its very nature. Is somewhat ambiguous direction because my idea of where social distancing is. Possible is going to be different from Counselor de Mora's idea of where social distance, social distancing is possible. And therefore. Enforcement or effectiveness is going to already be a problem, so I think if we do choose to go down the road of a bylaw. That we should probably be thinking about something very clear and very inclusive. All downtown, all central business district sidewalks, something like that in all cases. Or something as clear as. Masks must be worn on public sidewalks whenever one is within two meters of an unrelated individual. Or something equally specific, otherwise we're really. It really would only be, I think, a gesture, so I'm just wondering what council thinks about. If we do feel forced to go down the road of a bylaw. What kind of wording, what kind of direction would we want to be looking at relative to? Those outdoor public spaces that we are responsible for. So that's a that's a question for counselors.
Thank you, I see hands, Councilor Kellah, MP.
I agree with Council Butler, like if we're going to bring in the outdoor public space bylaw, I think we nearly have to. Outline what streets it's on because if somebody is across on Canard and. There's hardly anybody around, they shouldn't have to put a face mask on, you know what I mean, like I think we have to be very, very. Careful because. I don't want it to come in where some people will say, okay, they'll start policing each other. And I think that would be very bad in town. We don't want to go where we were when we were on lockdown where people were putting notes on people's cars, I would hate for us. For people not to respect people's space and but I'd hate for people to start getting aggressive with tourists. Or with each other in the community, I don't think that's good community spirit, so. I understand that down in the deadlock of town like Canard, where all the bars and restaurants and there's. Like a lot of people and the same on Patricia Street. But on the train station side of Canard, hardly anybody walks that area unless they're going back and forth to the park and that. So I think we really like as Butler said, like we have to outline because I don't think it's fair to our bylaw. Or it's fair to the RCMP because people. That we have a certain sector of people that don't believe they should have to wear a mask, that it's not natural and so. We need to be careful within the bylaw and in order for it to be effective, like we should actually outline what we want from this bylaw.
Council de Mora.
Yeah, I have a few people in the community that reached out to me that have some health issues and that are fearful of social. Sorry, that are are fearful of social policing. And at times where they haven't been wearing masks or had to take it off temporarily, so they do feel guilty, they do. For the most part, you know, I've been told by these people that they do believe in making masks mandatory, but it's hard to manage and. They said that they'd like to see something in the downtown core. I liked the way the the direction Banff went with theirs and specifying on on where and when. More specifically where. But a lot of the information that and feedback I've been getting are comments about. People driving by or cycling by or going by areas of downtown and they see masses of people. Walking without masks on and you know, instead of. Being in it and speaking from that note and people are fearful of doing that, the people with health issues are avoiding. The downtown core as much as they can during peak times, but still manage to get in and out of there to do some of the stuff and I think some of the onus. Should be on us to be smart and careful and and navigate ourselves through those situations. So I'm finding some difficulty in really leaning towards one direction, but I'd like to have all the. Materials ready if we're forced into a situation where we have to intervene, so I like the direction we've been going and I think it's working. Not to the extent that I had hoped for, but like others have said, like, you know, maybe that's an unrealistic goal. But I think I'd like to see the the product of what's coming out of. Greater messaging through the park gates and how people are embracing the the communication locally, so. Thank you.
Ms. Nadon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. I did review the Banff bylaw and I'm not sure, I I reviewed their agenda package, so I'm not sure what they ended up passing, but I assume it's pretty close to. To what was presented to them in their agenda package and I think it supports this conversation in terms of. Determining what the. What the mandatory nature of wearing masks is and essentially. So they did go to enclosed public spaces, which includes restaurants, cafes, retail, so private businesses and. And it's got similar wording to what I'm about to to mention here, but the other zone that they did define is mandatory masks in the pedestrian zone. So that is the, I assume that to be the zone that they closed to traffic, one hundred and two hundred block of Banff Avenue or something like that and. So every person who enters or remains in the pedestrian zone shall wear a mask, that covers their mouth, nose and chin. The town shall post at every entrance to the pedestrian zone, a statement that says you must wear masks pursuant to bylaw so and so. And then the the town shall ensure wherever possible. That every person who is not wearing a mask when entering the area is provided with a verbal reminder to do so if applicable. As in if they're not exempt under some other clauses in the bylaw and. That every person who is not wearing a mask when entering into the area is provided with a mask as well as educated on the proper way to wear it. So this bylaw comes a week after town council approved a fifty-three thousand dollar allocation. For community ambassadors to be located in that area and to physically do the outreach of handing out masks and. Catching those people that come into the pedestrian zone that may not be wearing a mask. So people are approached, people are told, people are handed a mask. My understanding if if they want to continue into the pedestrian zone and not wear a mask. They are not necessarily breaching the bylaw, the way they approached it for businesses is very similar where it says. And I've read in the report, I think that it said the the intent is not for business owners to enforce this bylaw, but what it says for. Businesses essentially is that they must display signage that says masks are mandatory in indoor public places. masks are mandatory in indoor public places and that every person who is not wearing a mask will be given a verbal reminder as soon as practicable after entering. And that hand sanitizer should be provided and that the staff are aware of the regulations. So again, if the person is approached and they walk into the facility, they don't want to wear a mask, but they're being told and they're sanitizing their hands. Businesses are not being asked to refuse service to those individuals or anything of that nature. So the, the, how Banff did their enforcement is, is quite interesting and ties into comments by councillors in terms of determining a zone, a specific zone for outdoor places would be highly beneficial to enforcement if that's the way council chose to go.
Thank you for that. My commentary is as follows. I will go back to other councillors, but at this stage of the game, we're already halfway through the summer. And we're talking by law specifics, complicated enforcing warnings and so on and so forth. I think one of the things that we can do, we should do, move very quickly and we're concerned about the downtown core is just put up a bunch of posters that says, please wear a mask, period. Little diagram says, wear a mask. I think that that would be awareness. It would change culture because if you try and mandate people, there's always people who are going to be opposed to it. But if you say, please wear a mask, I think it's hard to oppose that. And with that, you can move very quickly. You can have posters printed and posted by the end of the week. Whereas a bylaw will take two weeks, the summer will be gone. Mayor Ireland, you're next.
Thank you. In, in response to the request from administration for some clarity and direction, I would lean toward mandatory face coverings. And that is a word that is used in the Calgary bylaw, not in the Banff bylaw. But there are face shields that might be more practical for some people. And if Plexiglas is acceptable indoors, then I think a plastic screen over your face might be acceptable. So rather than masks, I would, I would prefer face coverings and for outdoor public spaces, I would say from Aspen Avenue to Hazel on the west side of Canot, but leave the east side of Canot, subject to something different. I'll get to that. But mandatory on, on that sidewalk and both sides of Patricia from Pyramid Lake Road to Hazel. So it's defined by sidewalk and location and other places where two meter distancing cannot be maintained. So that would include all other sidewalks, including the, the east side of, of Canot. I, I do not agree with adding the word please to our signage. Right now the signage, and I agree, there could be more of it. I look forward to more of it. But it says, I think there are three messages. Well, there's welcome to Jasper, help us stop the spread of COVID-19. Wear a mask in public is what it says. We're dealing primarily with visitors. I don't, I don't think they know whether that's mandated or not. And we don't have to tell them that it's at their discretion. Wear a mask in public says enough and we should say more of it. But I, I, I don't think we should hint that it's discretionary, even though it, it may be. We are, I think unfortunately, dealing with almost the worst case scenario. Our, our visitors, for the most part, I suspect, and I've done no empirical study, but I suspect that those who are visiting are the most risk tolerant people out there. Those who are risk averse, like many residents of our community, aren't traveling, they're staying home. So we are bound to have the conflict between those who are risk tolerant and choose to travel and choose to disregard public health direction and recommendations up against those who are very risk averse. So our messaging has to be focused on a particular subset of the traveling public who feel safe traveling without safeguards. It's, it's a difficult issue. And that is why I think education and awareness is more important than a mandated bylaw at this stage because others who are coming here have to, have to be treated in a slightly different way because they have a different mindset. So I say drop the please. We can still be kind, but the message should be as it is. Wear a mask in public. That's my, my view. So that is not a council direction, of course, that's just my view. But Ms. Nadon indicated that in order to draft a sense of a bylaw, it needed some direction. So at least there are, I have suggested parameters that I think would be appropriate, that would find favor with me when the bylaw comes, if it ever does for approval. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Administration, do you have some sense of direction and guidance in which we can do something, maybe in steps, something soon, something later? Just.
Thank you. Certainly, we could focus on the, the key parts of the bylaw. Assembling the entire bylaw with definitions and in our authority and jurisdiction takes, takes a bit more time. But if, if council wished to see something for discussion or preliminary consideration anyway, we, we could do that and focus on those key parts. The timeline for returning to, to council with such materials would be helpful. Is that something you would be hoping to see next week or at the next committee? Or, and I realize the situation is rapidly changing and, and there is a time is of the essence. So perhaps a bit more direction on that aspect of when you would like to see something back. But otherwise, yes, I do think we can work with the current directive.
Soon as possible, I guess. Okay.
That's what I anticipated. Thank you.
Councillor Butler.
Thanks for that. And I, I just wanted to pick up on the conversation about where we would mandate. And I'm not sure I'm convinced that, while I appreciate the suggestion of Mayor Ireland, because it was in response to a question I asked. I'm not sure. I think that designating an area of the community is the best way to go as opposed to maybe just, um, say, all public sidewalks whenever you're within two meters of someone else. Because there are other areas of town and it comes and goes. It depends on the ebb and flow of, of visitors and locals as well. But I, I was out last night at a restaurant, which is not in the CBD. And there was, I had a, on a couple of occasions in the three hours I sat there, I noticed several points at which there were quite a few people congregating on the public sidewalk and also in the sort of privately held area of that hotel and restaurant. And of course, the public don't distinguish in their minds between, oh, now I'm, now I'm standing on a public sidewalk and oh, now I'm on private space. And I'm wondering if we wouldn't be better off to be more general and just say, if we go down the road of having a bylaw, all public spaces where you're within two meters of someone else. Because I, as soon as we designate a zone where we're going to apply the bylaw, then we designated a zone, other zones where it doesn't apply. So is that really productive? And I'm just asking the question. I'm just musing about this since we're spitballing.
Councillor Gallagher MP.
Just thinking, because we've also directed administration to ask for masking in our own municipal buildings and outside areas. Does that include playgrounds? I'm just saying that. Speak louder.
Yes.
We're talking about asking administration for us to lead by example in our own facilities and in our own public areas on the municipality. Does that include playgrounds?
I, this is where it's becoming complicated. I think that can we just give administration the direction of, of the downtown businesses firstly? Our facilities are closed. So I, you know, I, I don't see that as, as an urgent. But I see that as, that we should move fairly quickly into downtown business and whatever adminis, that's one step that administration should move forward. Any more discussion? Councillor McGrath, all the hands are up. Councillor McGrath.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. I do agree with councillor Butler's statements on, you know, if we keep this unrelated to zones and we keep this municipal wide direction, it, there is less, less confusion and less opportunity to not understand the direction that we're heading in. At the point made by councillor Butler on the fact that we're asking for face coverings to be used when you cannot be physically distanced from others, should be as vague as that. And it should apply to children at the playground as it should apply to us walking downtown in front of the central business district and it should apply to us as we walk into a business or when we step into the administration office in our own facilities. So I, I believe as broad of a sense as we can apply to it, as councillor Butler observed on a non-central business district sidewalk, the, the congregation of people as well. And, and we all understand that that can happen anywhere. It can happen across from the activity center or at the foot of the activity center where the children are leaving from their daycare day. And it, September is close and we will have facilities open likely in September. And with all that being said, if we can just draft something to include the municipality as a whole and not be so zone specific, I think it would achieve the goal that we're seeking.
I think council of Demora, you were next, but all the hands went up.
No, I was, I was helping with some direction and who had their hands up. So I only had two hands and I was doing this.
Who's next? Mayor.
I just wanted to return to councillor Keller's question and, and because I spoke to that issue earlier. And I perhaps assumed, I certainly thought that that discussion related to indoor facilities, not outdoor. On the other hand, there was nothing in, in my remarks intended to suggest that face masking or face coverings would not be required at a community level. I simply think that with, with one exception, it, it could be drafted that face coverings are required when two meters of physical distancing cannot be maintained, but are also absolutely required in the downtown core. Because I, I think it's just impossible to suggest that people should be walking down the street, taking masks on and off. That in itself is problematic. In the downtown core, you never know when someone's going to step out of a doorway within two meters of you and then you're suddenly in breach. Just wear the mask in, in the downtown core. The rest of the town, we could have a situation where you're required to wear it when it's clear that two meters of physical distancing cannot be maintained. But in the downtown core, I say, to that extent, follow the Banff example. It's on these blocks, on these sidewalks, wear a mask.
I see not a head to approve this. So thank you. Can we conclude this matter? Thank you. Ms. Nadon, you had a commentary, you had a comment, early part of this discussion about communication. And I will make that item 6.4, if that's okay with you. Okay. Go ahead.
As you wish.
Yes. You, you raised your hand, but I brought this up because I don't want to forget.
It was on this matter. So if you would prefer to, it, I was going to speak to the matter I raised earlier that I had another item. Okay. If, if that's okay with you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Just because we're on the topic of, of public health and communication with visitors, something that administration has observed over the last few weeks is cleanliness in our public washrooms that are currently open. So being the Canot washrooms and the log cabin at Centennial Park washrooms are also open. And we're seeing that we require additional cleanliness in order to keep those facilities to an acceptable standard, particularly over the weekends. So we've observed several instances of those facilities getting quite dirty and just from high usage and from individuals really not respecting the property. And Mrs. Malincheck can speak a bit more to how we plan to bring this to council in the future.
Mr. Deputy Mayor to council, that being said, there'll be a waiver of notice for decision on August 4th regarding the situation that council approved an additional expenditure of $9,000 for custodial coverage. The downtown washrooms were open in June and since then Jasper National Park has become a lot busier than anticipated. And there's increase in usage of the washrooms as well as them not being used in a cleanliness fashion, as well as the playground and fields in the Centennial Park area. So currently the log cabins are open from nine to seven, Monday to Friday, and then the washrooms are open as normal. With that schedule, the duties of the custodial staff ha, have, they're unable to provide custodial services on, on Saturday and Sunday at the Centennial Park. And we have a gap of cleaning of 24 hours on Sunday to Monday for the Canot washrooms currently. So there's been complaints coming in about the cleanliness as well as health and safety concerns coming in as well. So the additional budget requested would be for, for hours, three, three days a week to provide that service. So this will provide the custodial service on the weekends for the log cabin in the high use time and additional cleaning of the downtown washrooms. Normally it's cleaned two times per day. And then, and also to note, we have been seeing an increase of vandalism in the washrooms as well. So that has been brought to the attention of the RCMP, just so that council is aware. But yes, we wanted to be clear that we will be bringing that back for waiver of notice and for decision on the next meeting, August 4th. And just thought we'd bring it up for, in highlights so that council was well aware ahead of time that it would be coming then. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. With that, we will conclude item 6.1 and move to item 6.2.
Mr. Jono.
Councillor Demora.
If I may, I appreciate your desire to quickly move through agenda items and expedite the meetings. But the, I don't believe that we're finished with 6.1 and I did want to bring something up because it, it does involve public health update and concerns. And if I'm being cut off, then so be it. I'll just address it at other new business. But I figured while we're, you know what, I'll just bring it up then. Sorry.
Why don't you go ahead and do that now? I'm sorry for my oversight.
No, no, that's fine. I apologize. But okay, so part of our movement towards social distancing and trying to provide space for people in the community was the, the movement to allow seating spaces in parking lanes in the community. And we made a pledge, or we use that word a few times today. We made a commitment to continually review and, and discuss the progress of that. And we did talk about going as we went through the summer and to review. and to review how it was working and maybe review, looking at some other additions to making the downtown core safer or changing up what we've been doing. So I like what I'm seeing so far with, with the public seating out there and, and at first, I was a little concerned about a motif. And I think that the businesses that are part, that are partaking in, in using the parking lanes are doing a really good job right across the board. And, and I'm glad that they were given the opportunity to use their own team. And I think their sentiment has been, well, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. And I think a lot of people were waiting to see how that was developing before they moved forward. But because the season is so short and we've committed to only doing this for one year, I think that some businesses were apprehensive. Like Mayor Ireland said initially when we were discussing this, that this could provide a vibrancy in the community that, you know, we haven't been accustomed to seeing. It could be a part of the attraction to coming to Jasper. Sorry for, if I'm paraphrasing, but something to that extent. I think it is adding to, to that. And I, I personally would like to see that enhanced or see other businesses have the opportunity. This year, it's too late. So I would like to discuss making a commitment for next year as well. So extend the, the one year and look at it next year. From what we're getting advised from, you know, people that are involved in tourism, our recovery isn't going to be right away and that strong if, or if there isn't a vaccine in the near future. In 2008, when we had a recession, a global recession, it took us three years to bounce back to get our tour business back, buses, trains and all that. And I feel that the recovery going forward, particularly for our community, is going to be similar to that. So for the businesses that have made the commitment and the ones that want to make a commitment, I, I would like to open up into maybe having a conversation about extending it for another season. So for the next summer season to October, and then we review it at the end of next year, 2021. Pre-election, of course.
Okay. I would like to move to item 6.2. Council strategic priorities update. Again, council discussion. What's the impetus behind that one? Ms. Nadon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. You, you'll note in how the agenda is put together this week, we, we tried something different and, and that's how we landed here. So we used to have, I guess, policy and governance got carried on to brief updates, but the intent was to have policy and governance and give council the opportunity to have council-led discussions around items that were highlighted as the council wanted to explore those items on the agenda. So that's how we came up with the public health update and concerns was around the masking discussion and that counselors wish to have opportunities to discuss this on a regular basis. So we came up with that heading and Council Strategic Priorities was also an item that some counselors had indicated they would like an opportunity to discuss at community of the whole. So if counselors have items to discuss here, that's the opportunity. If they don't, then we can just move on and it's, and it's there to provide that opportunity was our intent behind putting that list together. So that's all that is.
Thank you for that discussion. Counselor Demora.
When are we going to have our next strategic priorities meeting? Is, are we just doing that once a month now or as far as council as a collective goes? I know that we had seven task items that we wanted to review that we discussed last August. I apologize. I thought my voice carried itself and usually people don't want to hear as much from me as, as I normally speak. I was just asking when we, when the next council strategic priorities meeting will be. And I, I couldn't remember if we made a commitment for a next date or the frequency of it. But we did have seven priority items that we wanted to have covered before the end of this term, and we discussed that last August, so almost a year ago. And I think part of me wanting to review it was just so that we're keeping track of those tasks and what we wanted to accomplish.
Mademoiselle Nadon, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to mention that prior to the pandemic, Mr. Virchill had started, had set a calendar item anyway, for a focused discussion with council on strategic priorities. And that, of course, went, went on the back burner when the pandemic started. So that could be one opportunity for council to consider whether they want to meet with their CEO to discuss strategic priorities and moving them forward. It could also be a council item or however you wish to step through that. But I just wanted to bring forward that that was an initiative that was planned earlier that just got set aside during the pandemic.
Mayor Ireland.
My calendar continues to say that our next strategic priorities committee meeting will be August 18th.
Yeah, I apologize. I, I didn't see the date.
Thank you for that. Item 6.3. Go ahead, Counselor Butler.
Sorry, thank you very much. But I guess in, in response to what I think Counselor Demora was pointing to, we, we have, I think many of us concerns with some areas, sort of strategic priority areas that we would like to see moving forward. And we don't have to wait for a strategic priorities meeting. And I take the point that Ms. Nadon made, that administration is placing, has placed the, the current agenda item there to ensure that provides a placeholder space for counselors to bring up an item of strategic relevance. That would mean a sort of a non-urgent, but item that we would like to begin consideration of. And any counselor at any time can bring something forward during committee of the whole or, or on a committee of the whole agenda for such discussion. The point I would make is that it would be most valuable if any counselor who wants to bring an item forward for consideration at a committee of the whole under that agenda, if they were to place that item on the agenda so that the rest of council knows what's coming and can be prepared for a conversation because conversations around any of these items are more fruitful if we have an idea that is going to be brought up. So I think we should do that. I think that that's a very good idea that that, this item be on the agenda. Not apparently having anything we want to bring forward today. But we should all be thinking in that direction. If there's something we'd like to begin a conversation on, this is, this is the perfect place, agenda item under which to do so. Thanks.
Thank you. See a thumbs up and agreement, so thank you for that. Item 6.3, direction on follow-up action lists. Again, a discussion, who's leading them? Mademoiselle Nadon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. Again, this is an item that just appeared on our agendas in, in following recent week's discussions. So I think Counselor Demora highlighted that used to be a practice and then it went away. So we, we brought back the follow-up action list, but we didn't, did not discuss how to add items to it. Or, so Mr. Virchill wanted a conversation here to ensure that everyone was clear on which process we would use in order to add items to that list. And I believe the original intent was that the meeting chair, not necessarily through a vote from counselors, but sort of in the absence of objection, that an item be added to the list, but also that it would be recognized by the chair and that would be the formal way to get the item there. So the idea here is to ensure that if there's a council direction as a whole, that that's very clear for administration and it's documented on this list versus something being mentioned and then someone wondering what happened to this item or not. So the proposal is that through acknowledge, formal acknowledgement by the chair, not necessarily through a motion, but in the absence of objection, we could add items to that list. That is our proposal. If council wishes to approach it differently, we can discuss that or, or hear some input.
Counselor Demora.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't remember if we had that on every agenda. Was it just a regular agenda or committee of the whole agendas that we had those on? And, you know, what would, yeah, all of them, okay.
So this is a procedure or an addition that we used to have, we've quietly dropped and we want to bring it back? I don't see a problem with that. Mayor Ireland.
I thank you for putting the item on the agenda in the first place. It seems to me that it can work both ways. That is, administration can provide reports to council on follow-up action items that make the list. But so too, I think it's an opportunity for administration to clarify whatever direction they might need on items. So because there's nothing specific from council's side, is there anything from administration where on the follow-up actions you need further direction? And I'm thinking in particular about the pledge program that you mentioned earlier. That is something that I think is important. I'm not sure exactly where you at, where you or administration are at. You indicated that there are some challenges and I recognize that it was a, it was a concept without a whole lot of detail, so of course there will be challenges. So if you need further direction to move forward or if you need direction to move at all, this is a great opportunity, I think, to ask for that. I think that it, it fits very well with a social norms campaign. It allows people an opportunity to be actively engaged in promoting the, the health and welfare of our community to take positive steps and to be part of the solution. So I think it's important, but I do understand that there may be some technical challenges. So if you need something further from council to move forward, I would like to know about it so we can provide whatever direction is necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono through the Mayor Ireland. I, I appreciate the offer to, to get administration to, to use it as well. And we also have another tool to get direction from council and it's a motion. And in, in this circumstance, council has directed us by motion, so that's rather clear. And in terms of the pledge program, I think it's just a matter of fleshing it out a bit more and, and seeing how that would work and that's work administration can take on as well. But I appreciate the input and I think the challenge with the follow-up action list is there are many boxes to fill, not just what the item is, but by when and by who and, and all these. So I think that's something we'll need to get used to together, working on and documenting. But I, from an administrative perspective, I think we have what we need for now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, seven, brief updates, policy and governance, item 7.1, reopening of the activity center. We have a presentation or an inclusion in our agenda. Ms. Malincheck.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to speak a little bit more to this request for decision, coming forward for decision next week, I just thought I'd highlight a few additional points that were put into the request for decision. And then, as you noted, the correspondence was there as well. Staff are still fielding requests for the service to be brought back to the community. So for instance, programs could resume at the activity center for dance and gymnastics. So including up to 100 users on dance and approximately 140 users on gymnastics. There's martial arts and also the usage by daycare. Glenda the Great could also open for catering to provide service to the contractors that are working on site. Children's programs, small weddings and funerals. And the reopening of the activity center in September could allow support for the physical, mental health of Jasper residents as we approach the fall and winter. As we discuss this further, the budget remains an estimate, obviously, it's always an estimate. It's based on a worst-case scenario, given the unpredictability of the revenue to be generated for 2020. The revenue generation is based on gymnastics rentals, dance lease, as well as the Glenda the Great lease, drop-in users and pass holders for the racquetball courts and facility bookings for events. Revenue estimates, estimates for the, when the arena opens, this was also something that was brought up as wanting more, council requested more information for mid-October to early November are provided as well. So it was asked at last meeting, the anticipated revenue that could be coming into the activity center with the arena opening. Last year, from October 15th to December 31st, it was 80,000, just over $80,000. So just keep in mind that that's only the revenue. And later on, closer to the arena open date, we were planning a request for decision that would highlight more information and give an exact, or not exact, but a budget for the additional net deficit that the arena would cause to the budget. Administration is recommending that the council provide a decision on the reopening of the activity center for August 4th. That decision date is requested to allow enough time to bring back the staffing. So there might be a question regarding on, you know, that it seems quite early to make that kind of decision for September 21st. However, there is a 15-day recall that we have to provide to the staff. That would bring us to August 19th. If some decide for some reason not to return to the, their positions, we would also have to post the positions. We are required to post it for at least one week, so that would bring us to August 27th. Then there would have to be time for reviewing resumes, calling for interviews and doing the revenues and interviews themselves. So at minimum, we're looking at four days, which would bring us to the end of August. And some of those people may have positions that are currently held and are required to give two weeks' notice, as well as potentially a week of training, which would ultimately lead us to September 21st. That was suggested as a possible date for, to open that center. So I just wanted to go over that because it does seem a little bit early and actually isn't when it comes down to all of the process that is involved in the reopening. And that's just a quick summary and if it's open to discussion, should you wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments?
I will add one comment. In the request for decision, we had a discussion last week and they talked about reduced hours for the fitness center and the activity or, and the aquatic center, sorry. And I asked a question, what are the hour, proposed hours? And I think that that information should be included in the request for decision in, as a public document. I think we should know in advance and the public should know in advance what those hours should be.
Counselor Butler.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the information provided in the RFD and I appreciate the updates in response to questions from council. And I've gone through it closely. I've considered myself very closely the estimated cost of opening the activity center and keeping it open relative to community benefit and to potential revenues. And I have to say, simply not convinced. And I have to say that I am a little bit of, at a little bit of a loss to understand why we would even be talking about opening the activity center until the ice surfaces are ready. There is for me really no meaningful community benefit there to opening staffing and maintaining the facility relative to community benefit until the ice surfaces are in. I think we can accommodate gymnastics and dance without opening the facility. Those are very specific uses that could easily be accommodated. I certainly understand the community benefit of those specific uses of those two specific rooms. But I myself just not convinced. And I think until administration can give council And I think until administration can give council a firm date for reopening the ice surfaces, I just don't really find a motivation to move forward on this. That's my piece, thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Butler. Counselor Demora.
Yeah, I think that there were some insurance implications and security involving just having a couple of user groups going in and out of the facility and supervisor with the building not being supervised. And then there's the cleaning of the washrooms and things like that, which have additional costs. But I'm just saying that, you know, if, if we want to go down that, I, I tend to agree with the sentiment of Counselor Butler in the sense that for the overall community benefit, you know, if we're, if we're talking about, you know, hosting events and, and things of that nature, there are businesses in the community, as in hotels, that might have space to, that might be, you know, itching at getting some extra business. So I feel bad that we have a tenant there that, you know, is not being able to open because of our closure. It's not because we're, we're keeping it closed at the moment. But to me, there's no sense in, in, in opening up until we get some advanced activity in there, particularly with the ice surfaces being in place.
Counselor Keller, empty.
True, the Chair Counselor Jurno to Ms. Melunchuk, are the surfaces on time? Are we looking at mid-October for the arena? I know it will be more into November for the curling to, for that to be open.
The last update that Mr. Hutton provided, oh, sorry. The Chair to Counselor Keller, empty. Yeah, so the last update that we received from Mr. Hutton was the last that I heard as well. So the same that council received for information on the opening and things have not changed as, as indicated to myself as of yet.
I know talking to a number of, a couple of board members with the gymnastics, they indicated that they'd like school to be back a month before they go back to gymnastics because they were saying that they'd like to see the kids, that everybody is safe before they open that area because if somebody became ill and people were in that area, then they'd have to shut down and re-clean. So I know that the gymnastics are looking for more into October. I know dance has indicated, but I am in agreement with Counselor Butler and Counselor Demora. I think that, you know, let's set a date for mid-October when we know that the rink is opening and that gives staff, starting in September, mid-September, at looking at getting the staff back, getting organized. And because if we're looking at October 15th or October 16th for the arena to open, then, you know, have it open a week earlier and be ready to go.
Counselor McGrath, then Mayor Ireland.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Jurno. I completely understand the perspective shared by other counselors on waiting and I feel very much inclined to create consistency with the reopening of our facilities. And I am in favor of the date of September 21st. I do understand Counselor Butler's expression of why would a facility be open? Can ensure that the leaseholders have access to the building without the, the facility being open. I, I don't think a timeline as, as a huge issue if we are looking at having hockey potentially by mid to the end of October and we have staff in place booking tournaments and getting comfortable with their new practices and procedures a month ahead of time. And as long as leaseholders are using the space, I, I don't have enough information today to say, yes, September 21st is the day. But the, the types of information, I would be seeking to make a better informed decision next week on the date of September 21st. Alongside the fitness and aquatic center, I would see the information, is the gymnastics group going to be using the space and, and what date would they be using the space? Is the dance program going to resume and what date are, are they going to resume? Just so we have information on what the use will be like. Of course, with mandating masks upon entry of the building and the hand sanitizing stations being available and giving our, our staff an opportunity to get comfortable in their working environment and allowing a chance to experience some level of normalcy once again. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Jurno. I just wanted to address a matter of, of process and more directly through you, Mr. Chair to Mrs. Melunchuk. And I, I just want to be clear that from my perspective at least, presenting the report is, and the request for decision is absolutely the right thing to do and in compliance with, I think, pretty clear direction. So I, and I'm not trying to interpret any other remarks here, but just from my own perspective and to state publicly, council directly requested that when facilities were able to be reopened, that administration come back with a report for council determination. So whether or not council follows the recommendation is, is not really your task. You were directed to bring this back and, and for my part, I, I simply thank you. I think the report is, is thorough. The options are available to council and council can exercise those options. But I want to be clear that from my perspective, this is exactly what was intended. If we choose a different date, that's entirely up to us. But we said, when they are available to be reopened, let us know and we will decide. And you have done that and I thank you for that, you, you've done it properly. And I didn't want anything that was said here to dissuade you from that. You did what was asked and I thank you for that.
Thank you, this is a request for decision at next week's meeting, which will be debated again then. But meantime, we have questions, Counselor Butler.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on Mayor Ireland's comments. And since I've stated that I'm, I'm convinced relative to the recommendation made and the rationale behind it, I agree absolutely and maybe should have said that I, I don't object in any way to the manner in which the requests have been brought forward i- in any way. That's our, that is our, our job and responsibility to, you know, weigh, weigh it. But the recommendations and, and the rationale behind them. But certainly, I have no discomfort with the manner in which this has been brought forward. I, I wanted to address further Counselor McGrath's comment regarding consistency and just say that that's really consistency in facility open, openings is behind my thinking that really opening the curling rink, the activity, or sorry, the arena and the activity center is to me essentially should be seen as one facility opening. I, I see no imperative relative to consistency in opening the activity center, which is really honestly mostly just opening the lobby and a, a lot of space that won't be used. I see no need to be consistent with opening that facility relative to the fitness and aquatic center. I see that imperative for consistency much more relative to the main uses, uses of that area, which is the ice surfaces. So that's how I see the question of consistency. Thank you.
Thank you for that. This item is on next week's agenda, council agenda for decision. So we'll be provided with the opportunity to debate it further. So Counselor Demora, you have comment?
Well, that's a good point. I, I like what Counselor McGrath stated and yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to another week of, of contemplating the pros and cons. I do want to say that Jasper's been doing really well and I don't want to jinx this right now, having zero cases in our community and, and having and not having a community spread virus. So I'm not saying it's because of the stuff that we're doing, but whatever is happening collectively in our community is working right now. And I think we should stay at that pace.
Number seven, virgul two, draft council correspondence policy. Attachment. Three pages of attachments, comments, discussion. Counselor Ms. Nada.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Jurno, I can introduce this one. We, administration brought, I think it was at the last committee of the whole, we brought up the fact that we were having some challenges with administering correspondence coming in and, and what to do with it and what makes the council agenda, what doesn't. And we had some good research and draft behind it at that point, but I didn't feel quite confident bringing something to council. So, and I think we left the conversation with what would happen to the procedure bylaw versus what would happen by policy separately in the meantime and how we stepped through those processes of, of updating our, our legislation was where we left this, I believe. And so we're bringing this correspondence, this draft correspondence policy for council consideration and discussion. And our intent would be to, depending on the direction we receive from council today, to return to regular meeting next, the next one, which is August 4th for notice, which would then give us some time to consider it some more. But essentially, after seeing what other communities are doing and assessing what our current challenges are, we feel like this is a format that would meet administrative needs in terms of what to do with correspondence. And so this is in front of council for discussion and input and essentially letting us know if council would be receptive to receiving this for notice at the next regular meeting or not. And, and any alternative processes council may wish to consider, so. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Discussion? Questions? Thank you, Counselor Butler.
Thank you very much for your work on this, Ms. Nada and anyone else who worked on it. I am in support of the idea of dealing with questions of correspondence at the policy level rather than within a broader procedural bylaw, which is, I take it the direction that we are going. Where I have a little difficulty understanding the proposed policy is the, the same as I have frequently. And that is in the division between the policy proper and administrative procedures. I, I think I understand why administration thinks that it's appropriate to sort of divide our policies that way. But I take it from my understanding of that, that the policy itself being the front page, the top page, is the policy statement that council would adopt and would remain a matter of council policy and that the administrative procedures would be the areas in which administration may choose to change or evolve over time in terms of the way in which the policy should be obviously administered. And in that respect, I find that the policy document is, doesn't contain all that is needed. And the administrative procedures contain aspects that I think more property belong in the policy. My goodness, that was long-winded. I think that what's missing in the top end of the policy, where we see some bullet points relative to the expectations of correspondence, I think expectations relative to the appropriate language, respectful nature of policy and statement of fact, I think those what are those requirements belong in the policy statement. How correspondence that is seen not to meet those requirements is dealt with is an administration area. But I think we need to strengthen the bullet points under the policy to state what council's expectation of correspondence is relative to non-personal nature, respectability and factuality. Did you manage to get anything out of what I just said?
That's a long bullet point.
I understood it, but I don't think I could regurgitate it or reiterate it.
Deputy Mayor Jurno through to Counselor Butler. Counselor Butler, I have to give you this, you are very consistent in your feedback. So my first draft of this policy to Mr. Virgil reflects pretty much exactly what you just expressed. So we've had this discussion before where what's, what's a policy matter, what's in the admin procedures? And reviewing policies from other communities, there's lots of different approaches out there. And pretty much what you just said was my first draft. And then, and then I received direction from our CAO to present the draft as what you see in front of you currently. So, so those are items that, that can be modified. And as long as the authority is clear, I, I personally and professionally would be satisfied with making that change as long as that's something council can support. But essentially, what I'm saying is that council clearly delegates to the CAO that he, that person is responsible for determining whether it's, it has, it's respectful or it has personal attacks or, or all these things. I don't see a challenge with moving those two specific items being respectful statements and then state, statement of fact. So if administration determines that there's content in the letter, that is not an opinion, but that is a statement of fact that may be inaccurate, that we would follow up with the sender and, and, and offer them the opportunity to, to edit that as opposed to administration trying to edit submissions. That is, I think we, there's agreement around the table that that is not something we should be doing. So ultimately, it is council's policy. If council wishes to move some of those items to the policy statement as opposed to the admin procedures, ultimately, it's your call. So I, I'd be interested to hear from other counselors what their thoughts are on that matter. But I, I understand where you're coming from and like I said, you're consistent. We've had this discussion before on other policies and you, you advocate for more, more meat in, in the policy itself and I, I understand where you're coming from, so, thanks.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Don for this. In terms of just the policy statement, they, there are three bullet points and although they, they might be accurate, they appear to me when I read the policy to be both necessary and sufficient conditions. But I think that they are not. I think they are intended to be necessary, but not necessarily sufficient. So in other words, I, I think that the, the second sentence should say, in order to be considered for inclusion in an agenda, these prerequisites must be met. There may be some, some additional ones that were just discussed by Counselor Butler. But having met those conditions does not guarantee that the submission is going to come on the agenda. And I, I think the policy should be clear that there, there are minimum requirements, but that doesn't guarantee that the letter goes, that there may be other reasons. It, it might be something that can be dealt with by the CAO or referred to administration or it might for other reasons not make the agenda. But I think the policy should be clear that having met those three is not a ticket to get your letter on the agenda. So just a, a change of wording in that regard, I think is, well, I think it's necessary.
Ms. Nada.
Thank you. So the addition of, so in order to be considered for inclusion in the agenda, following criteria, would, would that reflect your proposed edit?
That is my approach, so that there, there are minimum requirements. That is my approach, so that there, there are minimum requirements. But even then, having met those minimum requirements, doesn't necessarily mean that a letter goes on the agenda because there are other ways it could be dealt with. But if it does not, if it's not addressed to all of mayor and council, if it doesn't include some details so we can respond, if it's not sent out properly, we can say that those formalities must be met. But having met those formalities is not sufficient to have it on the agenda.
Understood. That's, uh, sounds like a relatively easy fix in terms of wording.
Counselor McGrath.
Thank you.
I do agree with both of Mayor Ireland and Counselor Butler's remarks on changes they'd like to see. I would like the respect piece to be in the policy statement as well as actual nation point, bullet point to be included. And I agree with the edit that Mayor Ireland tested as well. So thank you. And thanks for all the work put into this. It's fantastic.
Thank you for that, Counselor Butler.
Well, thanks. And I agree with Mayor Ireland's point. And if we change the wording from included to considered for, and then we simply maybe add two more bullet points there. One saying something like factually accurate and another saying something like respectful and non-personal in nature. Then I think we're where we need to go. And I don't have a problem with the wording that is in the administrative procedures, which clarify how letters that on either of those points may not meet the grade will, will be dealt with. I think that's all good thinking. So I think we've gone down to a really pretty straightforward, simple edit there at the top. Because I guess another way of looking at the point I'm trying to make, municipality of Jasper is committed to providing clear, consistent and transparent process. But we're committed to more than process. We're committed to some level of determination over what sorts of correspondence, not just the process, but what sort of correspondence is acceptable. Simply adding those two bullet points would do it for me. And, and that change in wording to considered for inclusion.
Thank you. I realize we're trying to be friendly and accommodating, but we talk about statement of facts that are deemed to be inaccurate or complete will be followed up with the Center for Clarification. Like, would the city of Edmonton do that? They would just print a footnote clarifying the errors, would they not? Or would they go back to all the letters and request clarification? It's just a question. Thank you for that, Ms. Nada.
Thank you for the question. That is not, I, I don't know if the city of Edmonton could potentially reply to all the correspondence they received. And, you know, and if someone did, maybe they have a staff person doing that full time, is what I'm thinking. I, we can certainly look into it. It's, it's an interesting consideration, which I hadn't thought of. I think for us, it's, it's somewhat easily manageable because we don't get that many letters. And, and I do see this as fitting with a service standard provided by the mayor's office, which is the Legislative Services Department essentially, is what this would set. So by, by setting this policy, that's where, where council is setting that expectation, I guess. But I can certainly, we can certainly look into it and have that information.
Thank you. Again, this is draft. This is for consideration. So it'll be presentation at the next meeting. Thank you. Counselor Demora.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. I know we've, we've said that in the past, but just your approach and assisting council and addressing all the, the correspondence that's coming in. I like how it's being addressed on the, on the agenda as well. And I do appreciate the form feedback in providing another layer. So, you know, thanks to you ladies and your colleagues to helping that get to assist us in our information gathering.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I maybe got a little bit distracted by some of the conversation. And I'm not sure where things might go now. I, I do understand that perhaps adding two bullet points from the administrative procedures to the policy. And I agree with that. But in the opening line, I think is another opportunity, if you haven't already got that direction, to state that the municipality of Jasper is committed to a respectful workplace and to providing clear, consistent and transparent process. So confirm that respect is of paramount concern. And then to add it as one of the bullet part points simply reinforces what we already have done. And we do have a policy about respectful workplace, and this is part of it. And it, I, I appreciate the comments that were made about that. And if we're going to talk about respect, it would be nice to talk about it in the opening line, I think, and then follow up with one of the bullet points.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very good suggestion. Thank you. So enough for you to work on and come back next time. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Juno. And so council can expect to see this for notice at the August 4th regular meeting. And so I'll try to incorporate those edits for, for that attachment and just providing some opening towards what might come in the future. I think correspondence was a sort of a pressing item from administration standpoint that we needed to deal with. And then anything that's related to speaking to your letter at the council meeting, that's the area in red in, in the draft admin procedures. So speaking to your letter, having a delegation or a presentation to council and public participation in broader terms, I think should be addressed in the procedure by law, is my professional opinion on that one. And that is why you're not seeing too many openings towards those next levels of engagement. This policy is meant to directly address written correspondence submitted to council. And then so the rest of the work to come that will add to this piece, in my opinion, belongs in the procedure by law, and we will step through that in due time.
Thank you. Counselor Butler.
Thanks for that. And, and I had meant to ask about that. So that sentence that you just referenced is red, just to highlight that it's in, if you would leave that in, in the policy, obviously not in red. And you're just pointing out that we may need to then move on and have, as we've discussed, another look at the procedures by law relative to participation in meetings.
Yes, and because that would relate to conduct during a council meeting is, is why I'm, I'm thinking it should really be in the procedure by law. But also, we didn't want to leave members of the public who may be reading this hanging and wondering, well, what happens if I want to speak to my correspondence item during a council meeting? So adding that sentence, not in red, in the final version, would, would direct people to there.
I, I agree. I like that idea.
Thank you. I think much progress has been made on this. So thank you very much. It is 11:28. Normally, we'd call for a break, recess. However, we don't have much left on the agenda. So do we need a break? Or we prefer to get done and go enjoy the beautiful outdoor sun? Correspondence for information, consideration or action. Eight point one, domestic animal bylaw. Eight point two, the fitness center. Eight point three mandatory mass. You have all read them. We've discussed some of these before. Comments? Thoughts? Like, thinking out loud? Other new business? Oh, Mayor Ireland, go ahead.
Perhaps just to close a loop on, on these things, we could institute a practice of accepting letters as information. We have them here. We, they are informative. I, I think we're not inclined in this case to take further action or to consider them further. Well, one of them, the one dealing with mandatory mass, that, that will come back for further consideration, not necessarily the letter itself, but the subject. But perhaps we could just institute a practice. I'm not sure that we can do it at committee of the whole. So maybe we should institute a practice as well that letters come on regular agendas where we can have a motion and simply accept them as information and, and at least then close that circle.
Counselor Butler.
Well, since you brought that up, I've been hesitant about digging too deep into certain procedural areas, but I agree absolutely. On the top of our policy statement says, in order to be, or will now say, in order to be considered for inclusion in the agenda, for information, consideration or action. And therefore, I think that accepting correspondence for one of those three outcomes would be a good direction for us to take. The default position would be to accept for information. I have found in the past from time to time, I'm not all the time, but from time to time, or I've thought that perhaps perhaps people that, in that there is absolutely no, there may be absolutely no outcome to their letter being placed on the agenda. And I think at a minimum, accepting correspondence for information would be a good process. And it would sort of push us to give due consideration to correspondence. And by the same token, we could accept a correspondence for consideration, meaning we do intend to come back to that topic at some time in the future. Or obviously for action, we may direct administration to respond. We may decide on further action. So I agree with that. But my question for the mayor would be, can't we, we could do that in committee of the whole, could we not? We can pass, couldn't we pass a motion in committee of the whole simply to accept into the record? That's all we're doing. So we accept the agenda. And the minutes into public record, all we're doing is, I, I would think that all we would be doing would be accepting that correspondence into the record. We would not be taking any legislative action, which we are prevented from doing in committee of the whole, but I would think we could simply accept. And then we would avoid the cumbersome process of, should those letters now also appear on the next regular agenda? That doesn't seem to make sense to me. And by the same token, I wouldn't want to see someone writing a letter to be included in the committee of the whole agenda, being told, well, no, now we don't put them in the committee of the whole. We only bring them into regular meetings. So I would think we could accept them by way of motion of committee.
Thank you.
I was giving a thumbs up because I strongly agree with that, and I think that's really good insight.
Thank you.
Like to explore discussing that further.
I think our mayor has a comment. Go ahead.
Well, two issues, and it is an important consideration. But firstly, I, and I just brought up the procedural bylaw, and I've got to find the section. But I, I think our procedural bylaw restricts us to the only motion that can be made when, I'm sorry. I'm confusing myself with in camera and committee of the whole. So we are not in camera. So we can, what motions can we make? Can we make a motion to accept potentially? But could we make a motion for further consideration or action? And I'm not sure that we could. So i- if we have a letter, when we sit as committee of the whole, we cannot take action. And so what do we do with letters that might require action on an agenda for a committee of the whole? That is why I am, I am more inclined to think that they should only come on a regular agenda where we can, if we choose actually action. Otherwise, what do we do in committee of the whole? Defer them, I suppose, to the next regular meeting where they can be actioned or, or something. It just, it just seems awkward to try and deal with them all at committee of the whole. But it's, it's a good question. It will take me some more thought to come to an answer. But my initial thought was, this is perhaps not the place. They could be deferred from a regular council agenda to a subsequent committee of the whole for further consideration. But I find it difficult to go the other way because we, as a committee of the whole, we're not empowered to make very many decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Nada. Go ahead, Counselor Demora.
I just wanted to say that I think that with anything, whether it's a counselor that brings it up or a situation arises within the week that comes on the committee of the whole agenda, we can give direction to have a topic added to the regular, the next regular meeting. So if something does come up that we need to address, need to address, we can just ask to, it's not even a deferral. It could be. But I, I think if there's something important that comes up that we need to discuss or make a decision on, as opposed to getting it on that day at a regular meeting and having to go through all that, I think that our regular meetings are, are quite cumbersome at times. And this is kind of where we discuss and as Counselor Butler pointed out, this is our spitball session. So I think that information added for consideration for the next regular meeting should be at this meeting. That's just my opinion.
Ms. Nada.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Juno. I was thinking it might be in the municipal government act where it's defined what council can or cannot pass motions on at, at committee meetings. And I can certainly do the research on that front and bring that back with information on the correspondence policy for next week. It's their valid considerations, and I think we can clear them up just with a bit of research.
Mr. Mayor.
Section 20.15 of our current procedural bylaw says, other than motions to approve the agenda, adopt minutes and to adjourn, the only motions permitted at committee of the whole are, one, to adopt reports or recommendations and to recommend amendments. Two, to amend its own report, reports or recommendations. Three, to meet in camera and subsequently to revert to a meeting held in public. Four, to rise without reporting. Five, to rise and report. And six, to recess. So we have limited ourselves, excuse me, we have limited ourselves to those six sorts of motions which don't include accepting for information. Unless you can say that that is adopting a report, but I don't think considered correspondence is a report. So I'm not saying that we couldn't change our procedural bylaw, but right now there are some limitations, I think. And if there is more in the municipal government act, I'll have to look at that. But that is what our own procedural bylaw says.
Ms. Nada, some comments?
I do think there, there's something in the act. I can't find it right away. But again, I'm happy to report on, on what the legislation says anyway for next week, if that's what council wishes to do.
Counselor Demora.
Thank you. I don't think that receiving correspondence for information, consideration or action requires having any motions. We're receiving information and we don't have to make decisions on it. If there's something that needs to be actionized, we just ask to add it to the regular meeting. We're not making, we don't, that's not making a motion.
Thank you. Let's move on. Number nine, other new business. And before we go into discussion, I forgot to check with Counselor McGrath, who's operating remote to see whether she's I forgot to check with Counselor McGrath, who's operating remote to see whether she's comfortable and clear on what how the meeting is going. Can she hear all of us? Because I plan on taking vacation in September, and I think Counselor Butler is shortly thereafter. And we hope to be able to use this method for meeting participation. Is it going well from your point of view?
Yeah, it's going excellent from my point of view. It feels just the same as being on our regular Zoom meetings. Except you're all in one place. Your your picture is very clear as as it would be the same to all of the the participants watching the meeting on Zoom. And the sound is really clear. I haven't necessarily heard feedback that you can hear me well as well, but I'm trusting that I've been heard or I would have been told otherwise.
And how is the public viewing this? So the same as our Zoom camera that we, when we had the meeting, how what does the public see? What?
Would have the same perspective as I would, Counselor Jono. So the public sees the same screen that you're looking at on the wall. They see a screen of me and they see a screen of the council chambers with all of you in it. And the sound quality from my end is excellent. So I'm sure that it's the same for the rest of the participants listening.
Good to hear. For a first step, it looks like it's quite successful.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
You seem to be discussing, have commentary or to add to this?
Deputy Mayor, the only other thing would be that it will be on YouTube as well. Just like before. So we you can go on and view it after the fact as well.
All right, other new business. Mayor Ireland.
I just wanted to take a moment. It's not real business, but to thank staff firstly for getting this room ready for for this. I think it's been a great trial, as you've just confirmed. And secondly, for the the revision to the agenda and adding the the policy and governance heading, I think that's a great move, a great step forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilor Demora, your thumbs up or you wanting to speak?
Both.
Yeah, both. I see. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't think that we got finished on the subject of the I'm just trying to find the word to use, like our social distancing program or initiative that took place. Starting out with a presentation from local businesses or a local business and then getting to where we are today. So I don't want to make this meeting longer. But at what point does council want to review where we are, how we want to progress, other things to look at? And, you know, issues that may concern what we're currently seeing in in public.
Thank you for that. Mayor Ireland.
My initial inclination is to go back to our original motion where we instituted the necessary changes as a trial program, I think until October 30. With I thought an end date, but an understanding that it's a trial period. And when the trial is over, we'll assess how it went. I would have to be convinced that we should be assessing a trial period in mid trial. You're welcome to make that argument, but from my perspective, let the trial run its course. And by the end of the summer, we will see how it went. And then we can reconsider whether it it gets continued for another year on a trial basis, or whether we would be prepared to say it can be a permanent addition. Or we can say that was a one time shot and it worked, but we don't plan to continue. But in any event, I think we had initially permitted all of this on a trial basis to the end of October with an intent to come back and revisit. So I I'm content with that. If there's a need to revisit right now, convince me. I I I'm open to the discussion.
Yeah, I think it's been brought to my attention from several business owners that after observing the positive enhancement to the community and to specific businesses that even though it's late in the day, had they have, if they have the ability to go on next year, they wouldn't make the commitment for the remainder of the summertime because of the expense. And talking to some of the business owners that have been operating, if they knew that they could go a little longer, might enhance what they have already. So I am speaking on behalf of the people that, you know, have have seen the positive side of the progress and, you know, if they're going to make a financial commitment, knowing that we have a possibility of extending this trial period for another season might provide other opportunities. Because, you know, a month ago, or when the decision was made, we didn't have a clear scope of how everything was going to roll out, what it was going to look like and the effect on the community. So I think I understand what you're saying. And I think if we handcuffed ourselves to all decisions that way and not evolve with, you know, new circumstances, then, you know, I think we're hindering opportunities here. So I just thought I'd bring that up. I was asked to bring it up and if council feels that the decision to stick to October 30th of this year, that's fine. I'm not going to try to rescind a motion, but just throw the discussion out there for consideration.
Thank you for that. I've been trying to encourage people who've made some feedback. I said, well, you know, you're Chamber of Commerce and should be gathering some opinions and feedback and provide that for council, maybe in tourism Jasper and all those people that are hands on, maybe the restaurant association, maybe I know they're divided on the on the outcome or or the product, I should say. The outcome, I think, will be very beneficial and they'll want to see more of that enhancement next year. Thank you. Counselor Keller MP.
Well, we've encouraged all businesses to participate and they have till the end of October if they want to. And you know, just like our busking program and when we started outdoor seating in the first place, we did trial period and you know, I think it's open to all our community for feedback and just like the busking and the outdoor seating that started originally just as a pilot project and was made permanent. I'd be interested at the end of October to hear from other businesses that are around these areas that have outdoor seating and I'd like to see some more of the retailers out there, but it'll be interesting. And I think before given the green light for another year, I'd really like to hear back from the community how they felt about it.
Thank you. Councilor Demora.
Yeah. And just on that topic, there are some congestion areas where people are funneling and I don't know where to to bring this up other than maybe addressing our C A O or acting C A O. And just maybe question policy on sandwich boards or what the enforcement rules are there. I find it like most of the comments that I'm getting in the areas of where there is sidewalk seating and the parking lane seating that obstruction of sandwich boards are making it difficult to navigate into an already tight space. So could we provide any assistance to the businesses that are advertising on the sidewalk? That may not be part of the business that's facilitating the seating, which is making it difficult for social distancing and people moving in those areas. Does that make sense?
Thank you for that. But that's I see that as being quite complex.
It is, but maybe we could bring it up at the regular meeting.
So again, to me, you're not going to be able to police this thing, but you'll be able to, again, encourage from a courtesy point of view, I guess it's that would be the way for me to move on that. But it's, I mean, I see the congestion. I sat, watched one establishment last night that was very busy, nice warm day. I was riding my bikes. I stopped and watched for about 15 minutes, chatted with some people and I mean, it was a guy's, you know, there's all kinds of conflicts in the social distancing. And there was a guy smoking at the entrance of the restaurant. So like, you know, here's another thing. Supposed to smoke five meters away, five meters away from where, but he was smoking right at the entrance of the door. I'm saying impossible to police all that. You just have to try and encourage.
I think basically what I'm addressing is the sandwich boards. And I know that in the past bylaw has assisted businesses in in placement and encouragement of working within some of the boundaries. So I was just wondering if we can explore that to maybe alleviate some of the inconsistencies with social distancing.
Counselor Keller MP.
I think this year we opened it up and the businesses that are putting out a sandwich board is marketing their business. That same business could bring out clothing racks and different things on front of their store too, that would use certain amount of the sidewalk. So I think we have to be fair to everybody. And if somebody is choosing to use that two meters on front of their business to put their sandwich board, I think that's fair. Just like we invited everybody to come out and use part of the so I think we have to kind of be fair to everybody here this summer.
I fully agree. I was just wondering if there's something that we haven't explored to assist to make it ideal for public distancing, social distancing.
Fair. Counselor Butler.
I'm confused. I don't understand, Counselor Demora, what is the problem that is being communicated to you that you're suggesting we should address relative to sandwich boards? I I just don't really understand what the issue is that is being suggested is a problem.
Sidewalk seating, parking lane seating. This is where people walk through. This is a sandwich board. We already have difficulty because of a tight space. And now there's an obstruction in that tight space. That's all I'm saying. That's been brought to my attention several times. I said I'd bring it up. I wish I could be more clear in my.
So the suggestion would be, you know, take take photos of that as you're going along. I mean, nowadays with oh, we all have cameras. So take photos and bring them up at a later date. Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This sounds simply like an enforcement issue, not a council issue. We have bylaws about public use of sidewalks. It includes sandwich boards. I I don't see that a policy decision by council is is required. If if people are obstructing the the two meter clearance that is required, then can this not be directed to administration? That's why we have bylaws, not not for council to be policemen, but to set policy. I did notice earlier, and I don't want to put Ms. Nadon on the spot, but she did have her hand up early on to respond. But again, I I think that we have sufficient bylaws in place to cover this. And if it is simply a matter of enforcement, as the deputy mayor has said, perhaps let bylaw know that it's an issue and they can address it.
I think that's where I was going. And could we work with those businesses to to come to some amicable solution?
Yes. Ms. Nadon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. Mayor Ireland's comments were my exact thought. So if council evaluating its policy and program at the end of the season is one thing. If there's discrepancies or issues with how the current policy directive is implemented, then it becomes an enforcement issue. Sandwich boards, and I would suggest that what we refer to administratively as street furniture might might be another area where there's some conflicts, as in if there's a a signpost or a bench or a garbage cam and it is in the way of that six feet or two meter sidewalk area that should be usable for pedestrians is is a challenge. That is something we can look at administratively. And I think perhaps if businesses are have agreements with their neighbors and they're expanding and using use, using sidewalk or public space in front of those businesses, maybe that's where some of those conflicts arise, where the businesses that are that have frontage on the street that want to be visible from the sidewalk, do want their sandwich boards out there, which is understandable. And then how does that interface with a separate business that's using space in that same area? Is it, I would suggest is maybe an enforcement matter.
Counselor Demora.
Anecdotally, when I was speaking to a resident the other day about that, it brought it to my attention. They were in favor of it because they've been using it as a safety shield. So they can wait until they can safely get around after pedestrian traffic goes through. So I found that kind of interesting, just to to throw out an opposite perspective.
Thank you. Next item, council representation on various boards and upcoming meetings. Go ahead, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Jono. Can I just request that at some upcoming meeting of committee of the whole, we return to this question about how we might formalize correspondence that does wind up on our agenda. We had a bit of a discussion today, but it's it's left unresolved. We need a little bit of research, but I would like to clarify at some point how we're going to do that. And if it's if it's a motion to accept for information made in committee of the whole, that's fine. But I just don't want to lose sight of this. So at perhaps the next committee of the whole meeting, we could return to this and just formalize what it is that we're.
Thank you for that, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I understand. Sorry, clear on it. Representation on various boards via Zoom. I attended the TransCanada Yellowhead Highway Association Annual General Meeting. So all done by Zoom. Of course, it's all of Western Canada. So it's always been done by phone. Was that old system? It is hoped that we will get together as an association in a formal room assembly, just like our A U M A and all those other conferences in in the next future. Mostly acknowledgements by the various provinces, various participants of each province as to how well each of their governments are doing in repairing the highway and making it very presentable to the traveling public. I think that came from all four prairie provinces. So I'm glad to report that. One of the things that I did write about is you guys have all traveled a little section between Barrier and McClure. Well, they have just completed the repair of that. They completely redid it. So in other words, they took the guardrails off and have widened it a little bit as much, not by widening the grade, but by making better use of the grade. And of course, you got a nice smooth surface. So it is a big improvement. And I'm looking for a way to acknowledge the B C government for doing that. Because I traveled, I think, quite a bit. And that was one stretch, especially in the wintertime. That was just treacherous. Council representation and boards. Anything else? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you for that. On Thursday, I'm doing a video shoot with, I think it's canned for with respect to the the fuel reduction activities that have gone on for the last couple of years around town. So just getting a message out about public safety in that respect. That is protection from wildfire. And on Friday afternoon, I am meeting with the consul general of the Philippines, who will be in town.
Quite an honor. Thank you. Anything else? Next item. Adjourned. It's not on my copy. Thank you very much for that. Counselor McGrath, sorry.
Tomorrow from one until two in the afternoon, there is a community conversation. So I will hopefully be in it. For that, you know.
Thank you. Thank you. Prior to calling for an adjournment, I'd like to thank you all for your very active participation under this new format. I think that went very well. So not a, I'm sure, like, in its infancy, it's been very successful in my mind. With that, I will call for an adjournment. Mayor Ireland, thank you very much. And the meeting is adjourned. Need a vote? All in favor? I thought Counselor Butler would throw a monkey wrench and be opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jenna. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for setting me up today to our administrative staff.